First we'll do roll call.
Present.
First we'll do roll call. Chuck Campbell.
Present.
Bridgette Hayes, present. Earl Moore.
Present.
Curtis Ward. Okay, next is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session as presented.
Did you say the minutes of the executive?
The minutes of the regular meeting and the executive session.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the executive session and the regular meeting dated January 11th.
Chuck Campbell made a motion to accept both the minutes of the regular meeting and the executive session as presented. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
All in favor? Motion passed. Floor is open for a motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Okay, first up is the resolution for payment of claims. So this is on our docket here a couple meetings ago. Gina, can you go ahead and explain that to us?
Sure. So there's been a code or various points that the legislature can pay claims in advance of full approval. First is payroll, insurance, premiums, or any utility bills that may incur and may not be paid by a duty. Essentially, this is currently what we do, whatever stakeholder accounts are probably going to add that resolution as part of our code, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Gina? Do you have the payroll one?
I'll give it back. I'll do both.
I'll give you both. Not that one. This one. No? Where's the second? With my signature? Okay. Sorry. Did we make a mo- did somebody make a motion? I'm sorry. That's okay. Okay. Floor is open for a motion to approve resolution 2022-10. This is a resolution of the town council that the town could feel will allow pre-approved payment of claims.
I make the motion to accept resolution number 2022-10.
Earl Moore made motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Campbell's second. All in favor? All opposed? Connects is the Indiana Landmarks contract. Jess?
Yep. I did speak with Jared about his contract. I spoke with him on the phone for a little bit. He did send an email that you guys should have in front of you too that just kind of explains everything that he does do. Currently, with the other contracts and the other communities that he has, they don't do hourly contracts. All of them are pretty much the same. He did send an email after he sent this one just explaining all of what he does, that we can discuss breaking up the fee payments, so it's not one big payment. Maybe split the initial charge into like two or three smaller payments. But he just said that, you know, with his other communities, that that's what he typically does. Also, there is a person currently on the Historic Preservation Commission that can do what Jared does, even myself. There's no one that we have that can approve these COAs. So if we don't go with Jared, then we will have to find someone outside of him. But he's been with us pretty much since the beginning of, sorry Nancy, but the beginning of this facade grant, correct?
Yeah.
So it would be in my opinion that Jared stays on with us. And then, like I said at the previous meeting, I think we talked a little bit about, you know, if there's not, if there's not COAs to go over what that means, Jared wouldn't be coming here once a month. But in reality, he is. He asked us, I'm not a voting member, but he asked the other commission members if they would be interested in just doing training, just to get us more familiar with approving these COAs in the process. I think to date, we've approved four roughly. I may be off one or two. We're just not familiar with this process. So we all agree that the training would be great, so even if there's not a certificate of appropriateness to approve or look over, we're still going to have meetings where we will have fake certificate appropriatenesses to look over and then train on those. So even if we don't have them, we at least have some training.
So he will come every month for?
Yes. And then I did have a conversation with him about camp, because we have, Joe Stu is a new member, and I was pretty sure that the camp that the previous members attended was only once a year and it is. So it comes back again in the fall. I will attend that, and then if we have another member, Joe should attend that as well. And that's just how that process would go from here on out, that any new member that we would have would go to this. But again, Jared is only with us, specifically Jared is only with us this year. After that, Indiana Landmarks will probably find another person, because during the process, Jared was not in our area. But because that person was vacant, Jared took that place, that person's place. So he's been with us since the beginning, was with us all of last year, will be with us this year too, and then hopefully we'll get someone else from Indiana Landmarks. Or if we want to look into, you know, other options, I guess, next year, but I probably wouldn't. Just in my opinion, I would suggest just doing what we've been doing.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Jess? Any questions?
No.
Floor is open for a motion to approve Jared's contract.
Yes, sir.
For $3,500 for the rest of this calendar year.
Yes, I'll look back on that motion.
Chuck made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it again.
Are there seconds? All in favor? Motion passed. So we talked about each board member being, having an area of responsibility for each department, and just kind of meeting the leaves on between the department and the council to be more familiar with what, you know, the day-to-day of that department is doing, be able to answer, you know, specific questions and just establish a closer relationship with the department heads. Anything that happens in the department that needs board approval, then that council member will know to bring it to the board. So we have a list here. So I picked the police department and the golf course. Earl Moore picked the fire department, and then Curtis Ward picked the street department and Main Street, Main Street Inc. So Chuck, your name is missing.
I would like to have the water slash sewer department.
Thank you, Chuck.
And I would like to sign up for special projects as well.
Okay. So at this point, we only have someone for the pool, so I guess that would fall onto Chuck, since it's a special project.
I have no part of that.
Okay. You'll work with me, Chuck. Earl, would you like the pool?
Sure, I'll take the pool.
Thanks, Earl. So, I mean, I don't know if we need to vote on this. I mean, this is just kind of like an informal thing. So thanks to you guys for volunteering for that stuff, and we'll just kind of move forward and...
Maybe, I'm not just thinking out loud, maybe tomorrow I can send Gina or myself, doesn't matter, an email to department heads and just say that these, is that okay?
Yeah. If you have issues, please bring it to your council member first.
Okay.
Hopefully they'll solve it. If they can't, they'll bring it to the board.
Sure.
Thank you. You know, I just put that, do you guys think there's any other topics that we need to put off? Do we need a board member for historic preservation?
I think they communicate with us pretty well as it is.
Well, Jess does, so she's in the board.
My opinion.
Okay.
Or maybe the new person that comes in?
Let's just scratch off historic preservation for now. If we need help, we'll figure that out. Okay, new business, rules of procedure. So this is a three-page document that was approved by the previous board and which we revoked at the very first of the year. So Earl and I have been working on the changes to this. So this, at this point, is just a draft. It's not in resolution form, so if we approve this tonight, we'll go ahead and send it to Lynn to put it in official format. But this kind of takes out all of the things that were, well, this kind of streamlines and standardizes how we're going to run the meetings, which I think we have been doing at least the past couple ones. This talks about nothing's official unless there's a majority, if there's a two-way tie, the clerk treasurer can vote to break the tie. Meetings will be the first and third, first and third Thursday. I did put a part in here about we will procedurally follow the Robert's Rules of Order as best as possible. Special meetings can be called by the president, the vice president, the clerk treasurer. The president and vice president are elected at the first regular meeting of the year. What we did do is we revoked the part about how you have to serve in the council for one year before you can be the president. We didn't think that was a good idea. We also talked about following an agenda, which we're going to follow. So one of the things that's a little bit new in here is that, you know, we can deviate from the agenda that's published, that you guys should see when we mail that out, but if you want us to vote on something, first, we're going to have to vote to even consider it if it's not on the agenda. So that way, people can't just bring up issues and make, you know, call for a vote. You actually have to vote to see if you even want to vote on it. So that's a little different. And then it talks about public input at the public meetings. This is basically what Earl and I have already been saying, anybody can talk. I did put in, we put in here something about a lot up to two minutes, but, and you can speak up to twice on any motion. You know, this is just going to, we're just going to use more common sense in terms of public input and just, you know, hopefully everyone will be respectful and people won't go on and on. I didn't put in here, but when you do address, when you do speak at these meetings, you should be addressing the town council and not as a time to address the audience. I don't think I put that in here, but we'll just shut that down if it happens. That's kind of it, I think. Those are the, Earl, do you have any other major things?
On the time limit, two minutes, but we are respectable. If it takes longer than that, we allow, if it gets complicated, we'll start that.
Chuck, you got any comments or questions?
I think it looks good.
You think we're okay to send this to Lynn?
Yes.
Do we vote on her, or do we just send it to her?
You can vote for her to approve the draft, to prepare the draft.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the draft, rules of procedure, and send it to Lynn for, put it in a resolution?
I make the motion to approve the draft.
Chuck made a motion?
To approve the draft.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
I'll say it again.
Chuck, Earl's second, all in favor? Okay, so we'll send this to Lynn for, put it in a resolution. Next is Police Department Employment Recommendation Letter. Chief Mitchell?
Hey, Terry, can you press down that button on the microphone to make it green, the light go green, please? I don't think I did.
You have to hold it for a second.
Hold it.
I think you have to hold it. And then like a, like your eye. You want me to hold mine?
But the people listen, they can't hold it.
So I wanted the board to consider rehiring Sergeant James Williams at his full benefits.
I had this discussion with him, and he's willing to come back. He asked me to ask the board if he could keep his benefits when he left. Basically, his longevity pay is vacation night. That's pretty much what it will come down to, two weeks of vacation, and I think the longevity is $50 a year, which I believe he had four years upon, on five at the time he had the rank of sergeant. He knows the area, knows the people, he's very professional. I think if he's an asset to the police department, I would love to have him back. I think the town would want him back, but that's just my opinion. So I'm asking if you guys will consider giving me that permission to let him know. And so if he could turn that into his place of business, maybe two weeks notice.
I haven't seen his resignation letter, but is there, can you, you know, he resigned for a reason, and now he wants to come back. Can you help explain what changed?
Well, I won't go into specifics on the letter, because I think that's, he never did, nor did I ever ask him about the letter, because I wasn't here when he turned the letter, and so I don't know specifics on the letter. But based off of what he had told me, that he just felt that there was some immoral things that were being passed to him, and he, in his conscience, could perform those in a uniform and be able to do that job fairly to the public. So he was put in a situation that he didn't want to be in. And since the board has come in, he's from here, he would love to come back and work.
So that means he has confidence in the new board, that if it happens again, he can, what, come to us?
That's the reason why he came back to me and talked to me. Obviously, he thinks you guys are planning to do the right things, and that's why he wants to be a partner, and I can respect that.
How many weeks of vacation does a new officer get?
Three.
After their first year anniversary.
I myself always thought Sam was a good officer. I always liked him. He was very polite and respectful, whenever he did speak to me or anything. I hated Sam though. My feelings were a little hurtly enough because of the wording, but I understand that one, and I think he is an asset. And if so, if we compare it to the cost of a new employee, which will quite run up here in a minute, there's quite a bit of difference. And Sam is, does know the area, does have the experience, and I think he's a fine man. It's my opinion.
I mean, I personally think it's a good idea, only because, you know, we're down so many officers, and my concern with hiring so many brand-new officers with no experience is it kind of, when you train a new officer, well, at least, sorry, when I have trained new people, it's harder to get regular work done and trained, so it's taxing. And so with three new officers, to me, the four new officers without experience is going to be a lot for the police department, in my opinion. But I think Sam would bring very good experience that you guys don't have, and it would just be like seamless. And right now, we need to get things back on track, and we're not there yet, so I support the decision.
I support the decision to come back. I know some of the things that he was asked to do were wrong, and I don't know personally for things I've heard he did wrong, things I'm not able to get back to.
Do, I want that part, starting him where he left off.
Oh, right. So, okay, we have a new employee cost analysis. Looks like a uniform, what's a blue gun? Is that a taser?
The academy, what they uniform, the gun belt, and they would be carrying the blue gun around during the academy side of the building, so they're actual...
Service one. Okay, so that's 350, 40-hour, pre-basic employee pay, 745. Employee pay while attending the academy, about 12,000. Employee pay four-month, FTA process, 13,000. Bulletproof vests, 2,000. Patrol uniforms, 1,500. Total cost is about 30,000 per new employee.
And that should be before he even does anything, actually, really, you know, when they have...
So break the steps when we go through. So what we're doing now is that I'm going through interviews. Once they, if I get the interviews, and if we have a written and visible fitness test that will be finished for Saturday, then we'll go and see who moves on from that portion. Then we then will conduct another interview. If I have to do another interview out of that, I will. Once we get it narrowed down, whether it is four people or five people that I feel that is capable, what I want to do is bring those three, four, two, or one in front of the board, and you guys ask them questions, and you guys pick. I will give you my opinion of the one or two that it's above the threshold, but it would be your initial decision, and I would refer it to be like that.
How many applicants did you get?
I think it's either between 12 to 14, but some of those didn't even need the requirements for an interview.
And is the application process closed now?
Yes.
So you're down to three or four, basically?
I got it to, I believe it was six, maybe seven out of that. That's what we proceed with the test and the physical agility portion. They have entrance to the academy that they have to meet the standard, so they, I at least got to know that they can meet that standard, plus with the written test, the last time, to go on to the next standard. So we'll see where that's at. If we have applications, or there's certain things on there that just knocks you out, you just don't get to that stage. But once you get through that stage, and I get to the interviews, then once I get to the point where I want to bring it to you, whether it's three or four, you guys can make that decision if you want one, or if you want two, or we're going to reopen the application portion again. I just think that's the fair way to do it.
With Sam back, how many are you short?
I would only need to be short three. That process, like Bridgette was saying, the process of getting a, someone with no training, training, you're not getting anything out of them for most of the year. Before you have pre-basic, you have to get through that first. They learn a little bit of the laws and so forth, but they're still going to be with an officer. They've got to go through that type of training for a length of time. You've got to get through the academy, because that takes you here for four months. So then you got to get the O program. It's just a long process to get one individual up and running. So with Sam being back, he will be able to take one of those individuals, and I have two other officers that would also be taking one or two, if we hired three. Don't have to hire three, but if we did out of this, then what they would do would be writing with each individual, or that officer going through training for a month, and then they will switch with the other officer, and then switch with the other officer until we can actually get to the academy. So they're learning different areas, either nights, days, how the paperwork goes, so forth like that. So you get a different variety of another officer, so it means stuff with one particular officer during your training portion. And once they get through all that training, and they get through their academy, and then they get through the FBO, then I'll take it by myself to write with each one a couple times, do some practice, see how they're interacting, and that's the process, but that's a, I mean, that's a year.
So we're going to pay for their salary while they go through the academy, right?
Yes, it's a tier one. And then after, I think, three or four months, it goes to the tier two, and then...
Six months, I think.
Okay, so it's six months, tier one, and then after that, it goes to tier two?
I don't think there's a tier two any longer.
Okay, well, I was telling, I thought you...
I said that to you. The hour, I think it's a six-month probationary period.
Oh, so that all happens in a six-month period?
I think so. I don't know, I've never had a new officer go there since I've been here.
So either way, that's the process.
So is there, floor is open for a motion to rehire Sam Williams, and whether at his same seniority or not, or?
I'd argue that, you see, Sam back, full-time, in his education time.
As a sergeant?
As a sergeant, as a rank. Considering circumstances, his resigning, I second that motion as well.
Okay. All in favor? Motion passed. Next is wastewater employee.
So last year, and I can't remember when, so I'm sorry, but we had discussed hiring someone full-time for wastewater, as we already filled the full-time position for water. And then I think maybe during budget time, I had another conversation about having someone that's full-time at wastewater as well. So I'm just asking that I can go ahead and advertise for that position.
Gina, is there, I know I've asked you this before as a reporter, but do we, did we budget for this? Is this in the budget, or?
So essentially, the utilities are based off revenue, not really from the budget or the tax rate. So in the past, we have had three employees out of the wastewater.
Oh, great. Okay. Good to go.
Some of the, the utility superintendent is paid split out of water and sewer, so then we would have two employees paid out of wastewater and two paid out of water, which is, in the past, that's the way it has happened.
I'm full supportive to in the sewer, considering how long it takes to get certified.
It does, and I should say, I think there's been conversations in the past about cross-training and things like that. Cross-training is a good idea, however, where we stand right now with the employees that we have, we cannot cross-train. So for regular water, you have to be working, you know, 40 hours a week for one year before you can go and get licensed. So we hired Austin in August. I think that they're offering... I think that they're offering that test, I think, in September. So either in August and September, Austin will be able to go and get his water license. But for wastewater, it's three years. So you have to be working at wastewater full-time for three years before you can go and get license. So, you know, long-term goal, five years, four years, however we want to look at it, we can possibly cross-train, but we have to get that person in full-time at wastewater before we can cross-train, so...
So if we advertise, it'd be great if we could have someone that's already licensed.
It would be, and we'll put that in there. I talked to Tim, obviously, if we have someone who has licensing, that's incredible. But if not, then, you know...
We'll have to start from scratch.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Floor's open to four motion to advertise to hire a full-time wastewater employee.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Chuck made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there seconds on favor? Okay, motion passed, hire away. Next is the Zimmer Building, so I just kind of want to get an update on everyone. For the Zimmer Building, as you know, we had the stop-work order. So these past few weeks, we've been trying to ramp things back up and get it started again. So the first thing that we did here at the last meeting was approve the floor plan. Although for the review of the floor plan, there's kind of, might be a little issue with a couple of walls and whether they're insulated from noise. And so we are looking at alternatives to figure out if we can insulate those walls to the extent where conversations cannot be heard through the wall. If we cannot figure out an alternative solution, then there will be a small change to the layout. Just a couple of walls will come down as all, we'll kind of go from there. The other part that's the holdup with the, putting the license in, is the schematic for electrical. So that took us quite some time to get that. And Greg Marks, actually, I think he's gonna sign a contract with a local contractor. I won't say the name yet until Greg actually signs that contract, but that local contractor is working closely with him to get that electrical schematic done. That's the requirement to submit the permit to the state, which then takes 30 days to approve about, and then they can start construction after that. So we're kind of at a standstill, so unfortunately, the part that I'm mostly concerned about is the budget. So we still haven't gotten an invoice from the previous contractor. We can't really move forward with any changes or renovations in that building until we find out how much that previous contractor is gonna charge us. So as I asked Mr. Ward during the last meeting for that invoice, still hasn't been produced. So we're still at a standstill for construction until we find that out. So any questions about the Zimmer Building? Next is the Tinker Town Pump Station pump quotes.
So unfortunately, I got to be here for Tim, that he's unable to attend, he was a failure. I know that top quote that you have in front of you that includes the pump and the labor is the one he would be recommending for that pump repair and installation. I think, I believe the other two quotes that he had received was just for the pump itself.
So I'll just kind of fill in some here. So we just got an inspection done from Idem, I think. And during that inspection, they discovered that one of the pumps in the Tinker Town Pump Station is down, so we have to get that fixed. And Tim was looking for quotes for quite some time and couldn't get any until last, you know, week or so, and he finally got three. But they came back with just a quote for the pump. So one guy says, this is from Zimbra, it says, the quote would be well, the quote for the pump and the installation would be well over $20,000, but nothing more specific than that. And we have one from National Auto Services that says the pump would be $30,000, but that doesn't include installation. And the one that Tim recommends is from the Indiana Pump Works, which gives us a pump and installation for $26,795, which is what he recommends. So I'm all for $26,000 for the pump and the installation. The sooner we can get this, at least on order, the better. We can't, we're not providing the services as a government if that one pump in Tinker Town goes down, because each, I guess each pump station has two. So I would like to make a motion to recommend the Indiana Pump Works quote for $26,795. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passed. He can go ahead and buy this pump. Okay, next is the water quote for the golf course maintenance building.
So Brett had submitted a estimate to K-Running Water to the maintenance building of the golf course. The total cost for the tap fee water line and the optional water heater in the total is $2,732. Normally, they can proceed with such a project because of their spending and purchase limit. However, I did not budget for that, so I would like counsel's approval. If he chooses to move forward, to pay for it, I'd advise.
How much is water in head?
So every, every year, we budget approximately $2,000.
And we have Disney's projects.
So we just, currently just paid the endow sewer mainline part of that, as well. I think that was, I took 50 from the sewer fund, and I think 42 from the debt fund.
Okay. Well, I went up to the maintenance building and was shocked that he didn't have any water up there for a bathroom. So I'm full support, especially because the maintenance crew can do the installation of this. So...
I'm curious as to what happened. Because several years back, before the new clubhouse was there, when Jane and Al still owned the golf course, that old maintenance building was the clubhouse.
Yes, I remember.
So, and I'm sure they had learned about that.
They did at one point.
So I wonder what happened?
Something happened.
I know, I do feel like Brett kind of told me a little, like something did, let's just say, break, collapsed, something along those lines, and it was just never replaced. I mean, it was just never done. So, and I think because obviously there's a bathroom at the clubhouse too, maybe in the past couple of years, it wasn't that big a deal, maybe? I don't really know.
I think there's already a meter up there somewhere. You have to afford that tap.
A meter? Well, there's a bathroom, and there's a central tank.
A water meter.
A water meter.
From the county.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't really, I mean, I could probably find out, but I think it's just there. To, for what?
Say that there's already a tap up there, water meter, central tank.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that there is, and that that's what he's doing. It's repairing whatever is broken to connect to, I mean, the water has to come from somewhere, right?
Right. Okay, so I thought the tap fee of $2,059 is from the county as well. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, it is Frank County Water. So, yeah, so this is tap fee plus Brett and his crew replacing the lines that are, we'll say, broke? I'm not, I don't think anybody else really knows that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, but I mean, many points I want to make is, maybe there is already a meter up there...
Oh, okay.
That is already set in ground, and it just was basically abandoned because they couldn't, we said we don't need it anymore, maybe, I don't know. But they did have water all the time up there. So I know where the, where the right water meter is, is around the edge of my property. Up there, that.
Well, maybe this, maybe the $2,000 tap fee might go away then, if he's able to...
I see.
Right.
Might go away, so... And we can, I mean, I guess we can approve it contingent upon, you know, finding out further information, it could be less.
Yeah.
I just got, hold on a second. Brett must be listening. There is no water meter for the county at the maintenance building. The water line that they had at the maintenance building previously was ran off of a well.
Oh, and the well pump broke.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett, for listening.
That is long.
So there it is.
There you go. Floor's open for a motion to approve terms of our credit funds for water at the maintenance building of the golf course.
Did you make a motion?
No, I said the floor's open.
Okay, I'll make a motion. But we have the, that's quoted here, done, tap, the water line.
Is there a second?
It does need water.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there seconds on favor? Motion passed? Thank you. Next is the authority to hire counsel for legal representation. So our lawyer, Lynn Fluderman, asked us to make a, pass a motion to give her the authority to hire counsel in case we are not, in case the insurance company doesn't assign counsel to, I guess it's a suit, right? To another suit, another lawsuit?
I think there's two. There were two cases filed, petitions for judiciary review.
Okay, so I guess that's a lawsuit.
They just said basically the cost to find somebody who has experience in that matter would be less than her trying to figure it out.
So one of the things that Lynn told us when we first hired her is she doesn't do litigation. So this would be, just in case the insurance company does not provide litigation, we need to hire another attorney to do the litigation. So Lynn's gonna help us with that. I just need a motion to support that authority.
I'm making a motion to support that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, so Gina, you'll give it to Lynn, I'll honor it, thank you. Motion passed. Next is, oh, Department of Defense, we don't want that. Last but not least, one announcement. This was given to us this afternoon from Brooklyn Water. Dear council members, please construe this letter as an official notice of my resignation from the position of Brooklyn Town Council effective immediately. I enjoyed my previous two years serving in council and am very grateful for the opportunity. A lot of growth and progress has taken place in our town over the past few years, and I think that continues sincerely with Brooklyn Water. Last but not least, Main Street, American, or Main Street, Main Street Brook Hill is having a historic preservation event on Monday, February 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the Valley House Plaza. Everybody is invited to include the council members.
What day is it on, Saturday?
Monday, February 6th. This coming Monday, 6:00 p.m.
I'll forward it to you, Chuck, in an email. It's me.
You got anything, Chuck?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
No.
Jess?
I do, sorry. So last year, there was discussion about renting Brook Hill Clubhouse out. Because it was our first year, obviously, we did not do that. So Ron has done some research for us on renting the clubhouse prices. We have a rough draft, I gave it to you, sorry, tonight. Nothing that you have to vote on in my meetings right now, but just to look over, take into consideration. And we can talk about it at a meeting, that's fine, but I just wanted you guys to look over it and be, you know, aware of that. We've already had at least one person for sure, that he's meeting tomorrow, that wants to host a graduation party there. And then I have people in the summer, and I know he has too, about renting the clubhouse. So definitely something that we need to discuss, pricing and things like that. So this is what he has, we have so far.
And one, how does that work if it's rented out, but we have our members? So we use the clubhouse because there's... You want that word?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so what we do is we have the satellite building, which we're gonna bring that up to speed. So the rental would be taking place for parties and get-togethers and Thanksgiving, whatever, dinners, whatever it is. But that would be from 6 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Would be the timeframe, Monday through Saturday. So that would give us the ability to use the satellite next door as additional. And then that way, I would close it, private party for that evening.
I'm sorry, so the satellite building would be for the club membership? Or the clubhouse?
The clubhouse is the clubhouse, and it's gonna remain the clubhouse. That's where you always come and go, come in and out and stuff. But on private parties, we would still have the ability to use the satellite right next door as to run credit cards, do whatever we need to do on that side.
So because there's the new, the clubhouse burnt down, so in the meantime, they built a smaller building, and that's where they were running out of. So we have the ability to run out of both of those. So if we were having an event in one, we could still check golfers in and do what we needed to in the other. So they both have the same, will have the same capability. So there's internet, there's everything that you need in both of those.
There's other rooms, both of those. I agree, that's coming for a visit. I didn't think that a satellite building was enclosed. Is it enclosed? Is it a building?
Yeah.
It's got a door and everything?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Is that the same childhood, what the shelter was?
It is the shelter. It is the shelter.
So it's pretty big.
It's not bad, I mean, that's, I mean, because the clubhouse has been, we've used it.
We just moved the equipment over to the clubhouse. Because there's at least three weeks in, four weeks in. So we were able to move everything over, and that's what we did. And now we're revamping the satellite, I call it the satellite because it's different from the clubhouse. So we're just revamping that to make that come up to speed so that we can use the wireless, but for a dance and for renting the clubhouse.
Yeah, when I used to live up in that area, excuse me, we worked quite a bit, quite some properties over there, that's what I call shelter, which is the satellite now. But I would rent a classroom, evenings, and I could sit out on my back deck and listen to free music, because I had a live band.
Funny that you say that, because the person that we're meeting with tomorrow does want to have a live band, and then she, she wants to be more outside. So, I mean, again, like if you wanted to have a wedding, you want to be inside, you'd be in the clubhouse, that's fine, because we have the other area. But if you wanted to be outside, you could be too. So like, she wants to have a live band. But this will be, I think it's pretty, and I think that was the idea before me and before Ron's time, is to rent, you know, this place out. But we're just kind of now getting up to speed to do those things.
Well, it was ready.
It was.
It's quite awesome.
Yeah.
Took them forever, and I've got it pretty much ready, except for a little bit of work in the basement, which we'll be doing on Saturday, so...
And you said we're not having any bodies over there last year?
We did, and we had the membership drive back in March, but that was something that they do every year, but it wasn't, there was nothing over there. I mean, no, nothing.
So what?
Power top and bars, nothing. It was just an empty room.
Well, I think that's what general public wants for a room.
We thought so too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any plans to rent?
There can be, yeah, yeah, absolutely. There was, actually, I don't know how many, but quite a few people who got them in December. I mean, I wouldn't personally probably go for December, but that's just me, because I don't like cold, but people are up there more than what you think, you know? So, yes, you could definitely use an earband, you could tee it, you could definitely rent an earband.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Please, uh, introduce yourself.
David Kirk, and I'm a resident of the area, uh, of the golf course. And I believe something was said at the last meeting about LLC, um, giving you some, uh, financial records from the golf course, like, back in the past, did you ever receive any of those? And if so, was he, uh, he made available to public?
So, um, we have not received, I have not received any, have you guys? Okay, so I, I got a call from Dave White that said that he was, they were ready to, um, provide us with the tax returns. Um, but they had to talk to their lawyer, uh, before they gave those to us. And I, I'm not sure if those are going to be, I don't know if that, uh, I can't remember if he said that that was going to be disclosure that we signed, that we can't release it to the public, but at least we can see it. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember that conversation, I was... Uh, but he did say they had it and they, he wanted to make sure that, um, I and the board knew that, uh, they were trying to fulfill their promise to give us those financials. But, um, their lawyers, uh, not available to provide them legal advice at this time, but surely, surely.
Very great, right?
Thank you.
The city of town, nobody golfers for a year, so she's like, has to be my track or something?
Yeah, I should have it, just, hopefully, in fact, it's tomorrow to send out.
This gentleman asked a very question, I had asked, because I know the last meeting, they had committed to have the financials to the board by January. And, you know, as we're not feeling this, but I was kind of curious, or going to ask, uh, should we, it wasn't on the agenda either, but maybe this is important enough that we need to be bringing it to the forefront every meeting and asking for an update until we finally get the information that we requested for a very long time. For the financials from the LLC? Yeah. Oh. Uh... I'm going to have to call Dave White and see if, if he can help you remember, did he say tax returns or did he say financials, because- Well, you can ask me if that's the answer. Well, I mean, on the phone with me, that's what I, I was- Yeah, I mean, tax returns and financials, we don't give you the information on the tax return that we give on financials, so. Let me there, fine, then. And, and Gina, if you can put it on the gen for next week and, or next time, thank you. Uh, we'll definitely discuss it. Thank you.
Derek Oll, um, do we have a, uh, prom loss for the last year of the golf course, uh, Leonard?
I hope to find us tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, there are no further questions. Floor is open for a motion to the general. Oh, sorry. Thank you to everyone in the audience that was present today. I appreciate your participation in our meeting, it means a lot to me, thank you. Motion to, how many, motion to the general?
My second.
All in favor? Motion passed.